Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Town of Naples Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, January 7, 2025. First order of business is to have a pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance tonight, we have on the board Jim Allen, Martina Witz, Marty Zatarian, Robert Fogg, Kathy Tomberelli, a town planner, and from co-assistant office, we have Kathy Eddy. Eddie, I'm sorry, and myself, Doug Bogdan. And we will appoint Marty as a voting member from an alternate tonight. Two A, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with any items brought in front of the board this evening?
Nope.
Nope, seeing none. Thank you. And we'll move on to three is review the minutes, the meeting minutes from 12:03:24. I know there are a couple of comments that Robert made.
Well, I just found one typo and it looks like it's still in this copy.
Right, the original, it has been corrected.
Okay. Tell me what that one is because I'll just cross it off my list.
It's on the second page.
Yep.
Where it should say the fire chief.
Sign off.
Sign off. Off, it says sin all.
Yep. We knew what it meant, right?
Right? We did.
There's two lines below that, it says, well, one line below that said, so there is, so there is only two conditions on the plan, that they cannot get an occupancy approval until the cistern is actually in the ground. And it says the wooded stormwater buffer gets shown on the plan and also be included in the individual deeds. This, I was going to ask this to Kathy, does that need to be operational? Do we need to change it to say operational or just in the ground? Or in the ground is operational?
The, whatever the note number two says, which is what you approved, is what it is, and I don't know that it said operational.
Okay.
And I don't know what it says off the top of my head. I can check that.
It's what it says on the plan.
Yeah, so what it says on the plan on that note. That's what was approved on the original subdivision approval.
Okay. And we'll flip to page three on the minutes. So the paragraph that starts with Kate Tomberelli, on the next line under Kate, it says recorder, it should be recorded, I think.
Okay, yeah.
Next paragraph, Michael Curia at the end of that says conditional, and I think it's conditions. It says two conditions, and just below, two lines below that says conditionals again. Probably should be conditions.
Yeah.
Bottom of that paragraph, in the middle it says folds. What does folds mean? Do we know?
I had a question on that.
It says the signature's tonight because of the folds here at the, at that meeting. Two lines above where it says CM Brown.
Should say folds.
Should say folds, Jim?
I would guess that's F-O-L-K-S.
Folks.
Folks that are here.
Okay.
Right. Good job.
Surprise.
Two, two. Keep it scored. Remember we invited you guys today. Yeah, so I said it was here.
You don't remember that exactly how that was? Because, Mike, what the heck is that word doing in the middle? I think that's all I had. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks for saving us, Jim.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with those amendments.
Motion to accept the minutes with those changes, and a second by Marty. All in favor? Thank you. Move on to item four is old business, a site plan review. Is going to be a request from Tarpon Towers 2 LLC and Verizon Wireless for site plan review to construct a 124-foot wireless telecommunications facility, excuse me, and associated improvements on land owned by Scott and Kendra Kimball located at 26 Wilderness Way, map lot R07-045 in the rural zoning district. And we're continuing on with that today.
Correct.
Okay. And we needed a couple of items, I think, was the fire chief.
Correct, and that, that letter was in your, should be in your packet from the fire chief. And you had asked some specific questions to the applicant at the last meeting, and they are here tonight to discuss those questions.
Hi there. How are you? For the record, my name's Mark Bodwin. On behalf of Tarpon Towers and Verizon Wireless, with me tonight is Ken Corrill, who's the executive vice president at Tarpon Towers, and Martin Lavin, who's the RF engineer who was here last time. We were last here in November, and we introduced the project, and sensed that you had a site visit, hopefully it went well. And then we also submitted some additional materials, as requested at the last hearing, and it addressed the emissions inquiries. There's a letter from C Squared in connection with those emission inquiries, and we also provided a Verizon site plan adding an emergency vehicle turnaround. And then most recently, we provided a removal bond letter with an estimated costs to remove the facility once constructed at 125% of those costs, so there's a little cushion there. And also, we provided, upon the request of town staff, three images of what the monopole could look like. We're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
I'll ask you, Marty, only because you would ask about the IRF questions.
No, that's all.
Are you okay with what came in?
No, this is a condition for approval.
Okay.
Everyone, any changes have got to come before the planning board.
Does anybody else have any questions for the folks? I didn't either. Akina?
I just, Kathy, so the letters that, I haven't had a chance to look on the website. Everything that we received is available on the website, so the public can look at that. This last thing, that, let me see, that has all the, the radio frequency, because that was the question. I think it's important that the public have access to this information so that they understand that currently with the one with just Verizon, they're only at 17.7%, and upwards of, so even with the potential three tenants, they're still slightly under 50%. So I just think the public has, this should be available to the public, so this is going to be on the website as part of the application package.
Correct. What isn't on the website is the more recent information that we received.
Okay.
Which would be the images plus the decommissioning bond.
Okay, but this, okay.
Who's that page?
So my point is to everybody, I'm just asking that question so that you all will have access to that, and you'll be able to see what they're, what they reported to us after Marty's question. And that future, I just want to make that clear, that future tenants, if, you might want to explain it better.
Sure. To the extent any other carriers in addition to Verizon want to co-locate on that, your ordinance requires us to come back here and get permission from you all. And at that time, you could request the new carrier to do another emissions report with a specific equipment they're going to put on there, so you'd know for sure exactly what emissions would be put out. Right now, we've done our best to estimate what it would be like with all four, and we feel confident in that, but it's never going to be perfect until we know exactly what, for instance, AT&amp;T's equipment would look like.
Mm-hmm. Equipment. Anybody from the public have a comment they want to make?
I had something.
Kathy?
I did receive, and I didn't receive it till tonight, but I did receive a letter from and a butter. So I know that you haven't had a chance to see it, but I literally just received it before the beginning of the meeting, so I can distribute those to you if you would like.
Okay.
And there's a lot there. And also a copy to the applicant, too, if there is enough. I could always go make more, if we need more.
I'm going to have one.
I need to go make some.
Yeah, we can use another one.
So clearly, we're not going to read these right now, so I'm almost wondering if we want to do everything that we need to do.
I think that might be the best route, and then whether or not you want to hold a public hearing at subsequent meetings.
And then you have an opportunity to read it.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware.
So no other comments?
No other comments from anybody else, no. By email or phone.
So we haven't yet voted on completeness, so that would be the first thing that we need to do?
That is correct. If you look at the memo that you received for this, it kind of runs in the order that you need to consider the application, so you can proceed that in that direction.
From the completeness review, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion that the, that the application is complete at this time.
One second.
What's the motion?
That the application is.
Application is complete.
The application is complete.
And we have all the materials that we've asked for.
At this time, that we've submitted everything we've asked for, right.
Does that include waivers at all?
No, we have to make completeness right before we do waivers.
I would agree with Marty. Technically, you do waivers before completeness because the application isn't complete without those waivers.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, but that is a.
So we go to the waivers.
Yeah, so we go, go ahead, Marty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. I'll just go right over the waivers from the list down the top, right, from the general comments.
Yes.
Right, for number one is, and it says waivers, the applicant has asked for waivers from submission requirements, performance standards that are deemed as not applicable. See section D, page four of the application. If the planning board considers this appropriate, it should be granted prior to voting on completeness, which is eight at the bottom.
So first one is a perimeter survey of parcel made and certified by registered glance survey.
Yep.
So I wasn't clear as to what that meant. Is that the land that's to be used as part of the lease? I think that is prudent, at least that is clearly identified.
It's a perimeter survey of the actual parcel, the entire parcel.
Like a boundary survey.
Okay.
Which is, which is already on the plan.
That's right.
From the lot owners.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so that was one, that was one waiver that was requested. We'll go through not applicable, because these are the highlighted ones that stand out. So having down the page, not applicable is existing and proposed topography of the site at two foot, at two foot, if major changes are to the existing topography are being proposed, and they're not, that's not applicable because they're not really, they're not being proposed.
That's right.
The next one, not applicable is location and dimensions of onsite pedestrian vehicle or vehicle dealer accessways, parking areas, loading, unloading facilities, design of entrances and exits of vehicles to and from the site and onto public streets. Says curb, but I think, curb and sidewalks, and that's not applicable because it's not going on to a public street. And they're not changing anything like that. The next one, not applicable, is a location of all wells and septic systems within 100 feet of the property boundary. They're not adding anything to it. They're not adding any new wells, they're not adding any septic or anything like that. So that's not applicable. The next one was a requested waiver for onsite soil, I'm sorry, onsite soil in investigation report by an OHS licensed site evaluator. Again, they're not changing anything or adding any septics or anything like that, so I don't think that that's something that we need to worry about. That's a waiver that.
Correct.
That they're asking for. The next waiver is for soil and erosion control plan approved by Cumberland County Soil and Water Conserva-, I'm sorry, Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. That's another waiver that they're asking for. If they're not disturbing the acreage, it's needed to meet that. The next page is not, another not applicable. Oops, I missed one at the bottom. Yep. The bottom of the page is location, location, location size of all catch basins, dry wells, drainage ditches, swales, retention basins, and stormwater and sewers. They're not going to put any of those in, so that's not applicable. Next page, the not applicable is phosphorus analysis required if the proposed project is within the shoreline zone or the non-vegetated areas exceed 40,000 square feet. If required, if required, the analysis of phosphorus loading shall utilize the methods contained in the latest revised edition of the manual underlying phosphorus control in lake watersheds and underlying, published by Maine DEP, and shall require third party review. And that's not applicable because of the area, they're not going on 40,000 square feet. The next one was not applicable for utility plans showing provisions for the water supply at wastewater disposal, including the size and location of all piping, holding tanks, leach fields, et cetera. Again, not applicable, they're not building anything that's going to require that. And the bottom one is another not applicable for copies of all required state approvals and permits. They won't need anything for that as well. Okay, so.
I make a motion that the waivers requested should be waived, and the not applicable are not applicable.
A motion to waive the requested waivers and the not applicable will apply from general.
Okay.
Second. Marty, the second. All in favor? Thank you. General comments number two is variances, says the applicant is requesting a variance from the Board of Appeals for the height of the tower. The proposed height will be 124 feet, which exceeds the allowed height of 55 feet in the zoning district by 69 feet. And there's a note that says this has been scheduled for January 7. Is that a typo?
It's now, it's now January 28. That was initially the 7th, but our zoning Board of Appeals is meeting on the 28th now.
Okay, so this has been scheduled for January 28, 2025 at 6:00 PM, and then they'll be here in the town office, correct?
That's correct. Is this the appropriate time to bring up the language from the ordinance, or would you like to continue?
That's fine, you can bring it up now.
This is the proper time.
Okay. So today, I was made aware that there is an ordinance called the Minimum Lot Size Ordinance, which is a standalone ordinance on the Town of Naples website. Doesn't appear that that ordinance was ever repealed. I don't know whether that was the intent. I asked everybody that has any historical knowledge here, including the code officers and the town manager, which has very short historical knowledge, as to whether or not the intent was that the zoning or the land use ordinance would replace that ordinance. No evidence of it ever being repealed. So there is a provision in 6F of that document, which I emailed today, and I realize that that's late, and I hate sending stuff late to planning board, but there is specific language that talks about, "The height of a structure shall mean the vertical distance between the original grade at the roadside of the structure and the highest point of the structure, excluding chimneys, steeples, antennas, and similar pertinences which have no floor area." Now, the first time I read that, you know, it's open to interpretation, obviously. The first time I read that, I thought, well, it's a tower, and it doesn't have a floor area. And then I also read the definition of structure, which also, Mr. Allen mentioned that, too, that is in the zoning ordinance. It says, "The vertical distance between the mean original prior to construction graded the uphill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure, excluding chimneys, steeples, antennas, and similar pertinences that have no floor area." Are they talking about TV antennas and satellite dishes and all that? I don't know, but, you know.
There have been several other towers down in this town over the years and use the same thing. I knew it was in there, I just had to find the time to. And it's in there twice. It's in the minimum lot size, and it's also on page 33 of the land use ordinance. It was enacted in 2024.
And that's the definition of the structure height that you're referring to, that I just read. So the question is, is whether or not they actually need a variance based on that language. That doesn't necessarily have to be decided tonight. We can still go through the whole review process here and see if we need to do more digging. What I found today is that the ordinance was not repealed. Depending on how you interpret that would depend on whether or not they would need a variance or not.
But it doesn't matter because it's the same verbiage as in the definitions of the land use.
I get what you're, I get what you're saying. And so they are scheduled for the 28th for that variance. The one, the one other note is that federal law does require that we allow these somewhere, so right now, communication towers, which is also an older definition as well, the communication towers are allowed in the rural zoning district. The question is whether or not they need to go to the Board of Appeals to get that height variance that they would need.
So are you going to find that out from legal?
We could do, we could do that. And there is, I'll give an example. When there's not a specific definition that seems to fit exactly, a lot of times in land use cases, they will find the closest or the most similar to use or definition and apply that, and say that you must use this because this is what you have in your ordinance. I don't know if that's what the case will be. So we could run it by legal, or you could look at it, I talked to the code officers today, we all came to the same thing. It depends on which day you're reading it and how you read it. Is it, are they talking about chimneys and satellite dishes and antennas that go on top of a roof, or are they talking about any tower? Let me read you one more definition.
To the commercial tower?
Yeah, yeah. And well, the commercial tower, and there's another one, too. I'll read you the commercial tower definition, so you can hear that. "Includes radio, radar, television, or radio telephone transmitting, repeating or broadcasting towers, and necessary accessory structures but not studios or offices for such activities." So it makes it clear that it's not a structure or building like a TV studio or something like that. And then the other definition is a structure, which is anything constructed, erected, or placed on the ground which is permanent, temporary, or mobile. Structures include but is not limited to building, mobile homes, recreational vehicles, commercial vehicles, piers and floats, storage, and processing facilities. Boundary walls, fences, flagpoles, poles, wiring, and other aerial equipment normally associated with service drops as well as guy and guy anchors are not considered structures." You know, so there's, there's, yeah, so.
So in worst-case scenario, they need to go.
At the worst-case scenario, they would need to go. So that, that procedurally where that lands on you, depending on whether you decide to hold a public hearing, depending on where you end up tonight, we might need to change a condition. The way I wrote it was that they were going to have to go to the, you know, conditionally upon getting that approval. So just wanted to throw that out there while we were on that.
But we had discussed doing a public hearing last meeting, but we wanted to certainly wait until after we did the site walk, so I'm sure we'll discuss that still among us, but it was something we probably wanted to do anyway.
Okay, so we will not take a vote on item two.
Say that one more time.
I don't think that we'll take a vote on item two.
Well, we're not really voting on it, right? They would just have to go to the appeals board anyway.
It's got to go to the appeals board.
Yeah.
As way, it's written today, it has to go to the appeals board.
Yeah.
So these general comments are just, I follow the format of planning, those are not, items need to be voted on, those are later in the thing, but these are just general observations following the same format that North Star used in previous meetings.
Okay, so we'll move on to three. Existing conditions, excuse me, existing conditions, outstanding violations, if any, on the parcel. And it says the applicant has to lease, the applicant proposes to lease the property from the current owner, there are no current notices of violation on the property. Four is road, road safety, road standard and safety. The submitted plan state that the road will be upgraded as required. The planning board held a site walk on December 3 with the Naples Fire Chief, and see the letter from the fire chief, which we have right here, that the fire chief said in his letter to whom it may concern, says during the site walk of 12:03, we discussed, we discussed access to the Verizon Tower site. The road leading up to the Tower site was acceptable, was acceptable width, but due to the snow covering they had at the time, we could not see what the surface was. This is fire chief speaking. I mentioned that the road should be graded and surface gravel applied to support vehicular traffic. Yearly road maintenance will need to be kept up with. Examples of tree trimming grading went to snow plowing and sanding. I mentioned this in a previous letter, the turnaround area, the turnaround area due to there being no dimensions on the site plan that was originally presented. After being on the site, there is adequate turning area that we discussed with, with the area being to the left of the road access from the tower location. They were told it also needed to be gravelled, so that area needs to be gravelled. For access to the graded area, we will need an ox box mounted to the exterior fence beside the gate. And that was from the chief. And I think in one of the submissions, it showed on the plan, that's what it was, on the plans, it showed the area outside the gate where there was plenty of room to turn Number five is escrows and peer review. The town has collected $2,000 in escrows. In the event the planning board requires additional legal or engineering peer review beyond what the applicant has provided or will provide in future submittals. Six is decommissioning, see the letter, section N, submittal. The applicant agrees to, the applicant agrees to remove the wireless communication tower if it becomes obsolete, damaged beyond use, or ceases to be used for a period of 12 months. At the November 19, 24 planning board meeting, the planning board discussed decommissioning escrow and determined that the town should hold escrow. The applicant proposed a bond in the amount of $26,283 for decommissioning. And that's in this letter.
Yes. So when I wrote this, we haven't received this letter yet, so now we have that.
So can we have some discussion on that? Because Kathy had the question about should we account for inflation over the life of the tower. I can't put my hands on that letter right now, but I seem to think that the amount was 36,000 or something like that.
32.
32, okay.
So we don't have specific ordinance related to decommissioning towers. The only similar ordinance we have is related to solar installations, and in that ordinance, they require 25% additional to account for inflation, so that's what they used as a template.
And reviewed every five years, right? Isn't it good, reviewed every five years?
Solar.
Yes.
But I guess, I mean, you have another review every time if another carrier wants to put.
Sure.
So you're saying, so because with solar, we review them every five years regardless, so there's always that opportunity to up it, but now, because we don't really necessarily review it every five years, is that what you're saying? I'm sorry, my back is to you. Can you hear me?
Okay. We wouldn't review it necessarily every five years to make a change to it, but if they add any more equipment to it, then that still has to come back.
Has to come back, of course.
Come back before the board, so they can make that a condition of approval on that, to have that looked at again.
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of the. Does that satisfy that?
Yeah.
I just have one comment about however that is. Is that going to be noted on the plan? I can't remember where that gets noted.
The conditions?
Yeah, with the, with the decommissioning.
It could be.
And the reason I ask is because recently, at a select board meeting, somebody came to the select board for a previous thing years ago that had been approved, and there was some money put in escrow, and I guess it was somewhat unclear in the verbiage on who was ultimately responsible for accomplishing the thing for which the money was put into escrow. So this money is being put into escrow for somebody else to decommission this. I think it needs to be written in a way that the town is not the one responsible. Imagine Verizon doesn't exist. I don't want to even think about that, but, or whatever. So who is ultimately responsible? So yes, the town's holding the money, right, but the town's not the one that's responsible for the decommissioning, so.
No, no, wouldn't be ours.
Right, but I just think it needs to be clear, because apparently in the past, things were not clear when this happens.
She has a very good point.
Why we hold the money is for the event that they're no longer in existence, though, right?
Right.
So the town would hire someone to do it.
And let's just say it costs more at that point. Is the town on the hook for the difference? And if they're not, is the landowner on the hook for the difference? I just.
We want some clarity.
I just.
That's why they.
That's why.
That's why we review them every five years.
But we, but we don't review this every.
Not with these.
Right, so this is why I'm bringing this up.
This is like uncharted waters.
So given there's a lot of proposed conditions for this, did you want that on the face of the plan, or would you be satisfied in the notice of decision? And we're getting really good about making sure we track that now, so it's up to, it's up to you. Some specific conditions of approval I've seen on plans, but sometimes I see it just in the notice of decision. So something to mull over.
When we get to that point.
Yes, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah.
So maybe it should be on both the plan and the notice of decision, because the plan is in the file.
Yeah.
Notice of decision is electronic.
Or in the file.
Yeah.
The problem with towns is continuity, right? The problem with towns is continuity, right? And everybody sees the plan that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, so.
So I think we would lean towards the plan for sure.
Right.
If you want to add it to the notice, we can add to the notice.
So condition of approval to be on plan, okay.
Okay, seven. Says additional permits required. FAA certification letter found in F, tab F, in the applicant's submitted materials from the 11-19 planning board meeting. And E brings us to completeness. Said, planning staff finds the application complete if the planning board agrees, if the planning board grants the requested waivers. Staff recognizes that the planning board might have additional questions for the applicant before the completeness can be determined.
Don't we still have a motion and a second vote, Jim?
We just did that. That was for the waivers, Jim. And we did, was the motion and a second for the waivers, to approve the waivers.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody ever seconded my motion.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Did anyone second my motion? I don't think so.
Did we vote on it?
No, we did not.
Not on yours?
Not on mine. We did vote on the waivers, right?
Gotcha.
Yeah, we did.
So all right, I was confused with mine.
Yep.
All right, can you repeat yours?
So I'll make the motion again, that I, that the planning board finds the application complete.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second that the application is complete. And any other questions? All in favor? Thank you.
So am I right in understanding that there's not been a public hearing on this, an official public hearing?
Correct. So that would be on page six, where it says site plan review, and the first statement is addressing whether or not you would like to have a public hearing.
Given the letter.
Well, maybe we just discussed adding one.
In the old days, over the past 24 years. These, in the old days, over the past 24 years that I've been on the board, these meetings were public hearings. And then somehow, maybe I missed a meeting or three, and it got changed. And I'm just wondering, which is kind of irrelevant, but it's kind of relative to the subject.
Well, they're all public meetings, but a public hearing, a butters need to be notified. So that would be the difference.
So if you look at page 93, and I know you don't have it right in front of you right now, but if you look at 90, I had a feeling this might come up.
Of the land use ordinance?
Yeah, of the land use ordinance. There is a specific section on administration. And it says notices, this is before a public hearing, notices will be provided to property owners within 500 feet. That has been done. And then the planning board shall be empowered to administer application fees. Got that. Preliminary review of the application for completeness shall be done by the code officer or their designees. That's an old thing because we haven't changed the ordinance to reflect that there's a pan, a planner. But prior to taking any final action, this is after, this is, I'm going in consecutive and I'm skipping big chunks. But the planning board shall be the ultimate authority on completeness. So that's what you just took care of. So we did that next. And it says, prior to taking any final action on any site plan review application, the planning board may hold a public hearing to afford the public the opportunity to comment on the application. So that's after you guys do that. So I'm reading it straight from the ordinance and the series, the thing, the order that it goes. I agree with you in other towns where there was a full-time planner, the planner determined completeness, it was kind of a vote at the thing, and it was scheduled as a public hearing. And then the worst-case scenario is it would get tabled and you wouldn't have to re-notify. But the way that your ordinance is written, this is the order that it goes. But I hear what you're saying, and that might be a discussion for another committee, which is the ordinance review committee on the procedural process. But as it's written today, they can set a public, or not set a public hearing after the planning board determines completeness.
The reason I bring it up is because every time business comes in here before us, it costs them money.
Yep. Agreed.
And this, I think you guys will remember my comment last spring of jamming these ordinances, these changes, because we're going to miss some stuff. And this is exactly what I was talking about. I'm done.
Yep, I agree that it is what we, what we miss when we push ordinances sometimes through a little fast. Since I've been around the planning board as well, every meeting gets posted, every meeting is in the newspaper. And when we start putting them on the town websites, they run the town websites, they're always open to the public. Our meetings are always public meetings.
Above us, we're notified, all the things are paid.
Yep.
So we can make a motion tonight to have or not have a public hearing.
And we do invite the public to speak at all of our meetings as well.
That doesn't, what he just said doesn't work.
That was a question.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So prior to taking any final action on any site plan review application, the planning board may hold a public hearing to afford the public his opportunity to comment on the application. Notice of the date and the time and place of such hearing shall be published in a newspaper of local circulations at least 10 calendar days prior to the public hearing, hearing meeting requirements and state statute, blah, 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 blah. So the way I read it is if you call a public hearing, then you still have to know, you need to give people the 10 days.
Ten-day notice.
Yeah, so.
Well, with this particular project, I mean, we did a couple of meetings ago, talk about wanting to hold off on whether or not we wanted to have a public hearing until we did the site walk. So we were kind of implying that there, that there was going to be an official declaration of a public hearing. So I think we feel, I think, I mean, if we're going to have a public hearing, we need to do one. And I mean, I feel like somewhat we're obligated because we talked about wanting to do what we wanted to hold back. The other thing is, and I, I read this in the state statute, that I think there, a big difference between a public hearing and just any kind of a public meeting is that if somebody wanted to file an appeal, and they're not one of the main people involved, if they're like a member of the public, they can only file an appeal if they had an, if they spoke and brought up an issue during a public hearing. So if we don't have a public hearing, then we're pretty much disallowing the possibility of anybody wanting to ever appeal it. And I don't say that because I welcome appeals. I think we do a really good job on this board in dotting all the i's and crossing the t's so that we don't have a lot of appeals. But I don't want to take that right off the table because we didn't have a public hearing. So that, I think, is a difference.
Personal opinion, given the new information that we have here, that the person submitted a letter, I think we have, at least have an obligation to allow them to have a public hearing so this can be presented in more detail as to what they've, they've presented here.
I agree.
No, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to have, to hold a public hearing at our next possible, earliest possible.
Yes, I'll second that.
The 20th, it's already been notified, and I can't do any more for that one. My deadline for.
Yeah.
We have a really, we have a really strict advertising deadline, which is difficult because of the two-week rotation for the planning board. And that deadline was today for the next meeting. So it would have to be the February meeting.
Right. That's what we'll be. Yes, we have a motion on the table by Martina, and seconded by Marty, that we will be tabling.
Pull the public.
No, we didn't say table, but.
We're going to have a public hearing.
We're going to have a public meeting. We'll have a public meeting.
Yeah.
At the next earliest meeting, which is not the 21st.
It's the February, the first meeting in February, the first Tuesday. I did not bring my phone.
That's okay.
February 4th.
February 4th. We have a very far.
Okay, so the motion, the motion by Martina to hold a public hearing regarding this project and seconded by Marty for our next available meeting on February 4th. So, excuse me, all in favor? Okay. In our workshop, I think Kathy, one of the things we can talk about is we should clear that up, that either all of our meetings are public hearings or not.
I think you could schedule a public hearing for all the meetings because you're already notifying and advertising anyway. The difference is, is you put the word "public hearing" to it, right?
Yep, that's what I mean, so.
Yeah.
So that it says that every time we advertise.
And that would be at the discretion of the planning, planner, if the application appears to be complete. Ultimately, you still get to be in the driver's seat for that.
Okay, do we need to go through findings of fact then for this meeting? Or do we, should we wait till after?
I don't think you need to do that, but I do think that you need to make sure that you don't have any other submittals that you're going to need from them. And you've already voted that it's complete. But just to be fair to the applicant, since they do have to come back another visit, if there's anything that you think that you're going to need, tonight would be tonight. Because even after completeness, there is a line in there that the planning board still has the ability to ask for other information.
I did have a little question mark here. On the parking, on the snow, on the snow storage, on item five, the question was who was responsible?
Yep. I did have a question about making it clear who is responsible for the road maintenance. Is it the owner or the operator? Or do we care, is it owner, do we say owner or operator, who, someone needs to maintain it?
That would be in the lease.
Yeah, exactly. But we need to know who the responsible party is so that if it doesn't get maintained, we're, know who to call.
So, yeah, is the lease part, isn't really part of the application package?
It was in your initial.
I mean, it is, but I mean, it's not part of the legal document that we, that the town would be looking at in that event. If someone, whoever says they're responsible doesn't do it, then what, what do we look at?
What would we, what?
What would, yeah.
I just think it needs to be vetted out.
Well, actually, I mean, well, the town cares because the Fire Chief says you have to keep the road open.
That's right.
So we do care. We have vested interests.
Who's going to maintain that?
Yeah. So that would be, have to be written on the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional approval, road maintenance specified by the Fire Chief.
Be on the plan, okay.
Be on the plan.
So I did, I did have some conditions drafted tonight on page nine. And depending on what you guys did, we'd be prepared for that. And so what I'm, I'm listening to you and I'm thinking that there are some that may need to be on the face of the plan and some that may not need to be on the face of the plan. What I've heard tonight is that you need to have something about the road maintenance, the responsibility of who's taking care of the road. You need to have something regarding that subsequent changes to the, the antennas that are added by other providers needs to be on the plan and requires planning board approval. And I think that 1E could probably be wordsmithed to add that. It talks about subsequent amendments being, all previous conditions apply, but we could also add something on there that any changes to apparatuses or new, new providers or added requires planning board approval. So I will parse that out. I don't know that all of these need to be on the face of the plan.
So I got a question. Watching the video from this November 19th meeting, they were talking about 17% for theirs and probably all four would be 17 to 20%. If you get four at 20%, that's only 80% of required. So from a time perspective for us, why would we need to have each, have them come in, and then have AT&amp;T come in, then have T-Mobile come in, and then have somebody else come in? As long as they're under that 100% on that tower, they're all FCC licensed.
Different equipment has different frequencies and different interactions that are required.
And I understand that.
That sort of detailed review of the equipment as it's being added to what's currently there needs to be done by a licensed engineer. That's my opinion, to verify that it stays within the guidelines.
And I would imagine that they have licensed engineers.
Yeah, sure. And as long as they provide the same information that was provided before by the next applicant, then I think we're covered at that point in time. But each time, I bet, they can't predict what the equipment's going to be.
And I understand that totally. But if they just brought into code enforcement and town planning, said this is what we'd like to put on this Tower, and they can look at it, add it up, and says, well, I shouldn't have to come to the planning board.
One thing, I think they already voluntarily said that they would do that. There's one. And two, I think that if we're looking at the commissioning bond, that is an opportunity to look at that at the same time if we draft a motion at the same, so rather than saying they have to come every five years, which is burden, more burdensome, I think, than doing it at the time that a new array is added. And there could be changes in lease agreement, but we would only be looking at the things that change. So it should be a short meeting, right? It should be a letter that says, here's the emissions, we're still under the FCC, and this, we're changing owner, maybe we're changing owner operators, or maybe someone else is responsible for the road, but we'd only be looking at the things that change, nothing else. We wouldn't be re-vetting this whole project. So I think it takes care of that five-year issue where it'll give us the opportunity to look at the decommissioning bond if there's other operators. So that's, that's my thoughts. And I do believe that our ordinance does say any changes requires coming back to the planning board.
So that's basically what 1A would be squared into saying?
Correct.
I'm sorry, 1E.
1E, I think we could wordsmith that a little bit.
I think too, because, I mean, we're talking about if, anything that gives, gives off emissions, we're talking about potential public health impact. I think those kinds of decisions need to be done publicly.
Publicly.
In the light of day, so.
Yes.
It also gives us an opportunity, if someone had brought up that, making sure that all the apparatuses are operational, maybe something can be removed. You know, I mean, it just gives you the opportunity to kind of look at what, what's on the ground now and what's actually happening in the future.
Kathy, you also have a note on number eight on exterior lighting. So there is no proposed additional lighting, but there is security lighting, and that lighting should be directed downward. Is that, that would be, could you comment on the lighting?
What type of security lighting would be great if they could address that?
Just lighting that's.
Can you come to the?
Yeah.
Any lighting that's going to be required by the carrier for their compound would be on a motion sensor, and it'd be pointed downwards towards the equip. So unless someone's inside the compound, that's secure, the lighting is not going to be on.
Okay. And it doesn't appear that wildlife could get in there since it's a tall fence with barbed wire at the top.
Correct.
So it's not going to be going off.
If it's going off.
Ideally at all.
But if it is going off, then there, there's obviously something in there that shouldn't be in there. And it'll create awareness to address whatever's in the compound that's not supposed to be in the compound.
Right. Is that, how is that monitored by, is it, who knows when the light goes off?
So there, so it depends on the systems, but, but you have NOCs that are monitoring, the carries have their own NOC. We've got, we have monitoring systems based off of what's required for the, for the, for the compound and the equipment that's being installed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we get too far, you went by seven, what said utilities, public safety. There's a, there is a bullet, the third one down, says new poles or above-ground electrical.
Someone had brought that up at the last meeting, might have been Marty.
Oh, because in, like, new subdivisions and things, we asked that poles be put underground? And.
It's not a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision.
Not a subdivision? I thought we had that under, as a subdivision rule, no? Okay.
It is, it is, but.
This is not a subdivision.
Yeah, gotcha.
I can put an overhead pole line into my house.
Right. Only because you had that underlined, so we're just not worried about that.
I had it on there because someone had brought it up. And they're at the site wa, at the site walk, I think is when it was brought up. They were showing where the existing poles are and how they can be brought up.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, and then nine, Kathy had a couple of things highlighted there as well. For nine, under emissions, emissions.
And this once again was written before the new materials that you saw tonight came in, because I like to get these out to you earlier rather than later.
And the last one on page nine was the bond, and that's fine with this paper? You okay with that? Okay.
As part of that bond, you wanted to have something wordsmithed in the, in the notes about the responsibility, it's the responsibility of the owner or the applicant, the applicant operator to decommission, unless of course, they're no longer in existence, and then we would use the money how we needed to. So I'll wordsmith that as well.
And so I guess we're not going to go through conclusions of law today? Cause we're not going to make a motion to vote on it, right?
Right.
Okay.
So is, I have in my notes from last time, one of the conditions that equipment not in use is to be removed, does that explicitly stated anywhere?
So I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Condition, that equipment that is not in use is to be removed from the site? I have that in my notes from last, our last meeting.
So any inoperational equipment needs to be removed? Can add that to project specific? Just a note, most of the standard of conditions of approval were provided by the applicant. I changed them just slightly. And standard condition of approval are the ones that pretty much apply to all projects of this nature. And then I added the other ones, and I kept them separate because I just wanted to be specific. And I just have one more question just for clarity, if I may?
One second.
The actual monopole is 120 feet, but it's the apparatuses or the antennas that are added that could potentially be 124, is that correct?
Right. The extra four feet is a whip line, I call it. It's a couple of millimeters wide. It's not invisible. That's why we say it's, it's technically that high, but you cannot really see that. I have one, one question too, if you don't mind. So I think we're on the agenda for the zoning board. Prior to the next public hearing, the planning board, and I guess the question is, when do you all think you'll have a decision made on that?
Quickly, quickly. I, I think that would be great to hear from the planning board. You're not, obviously you're not going to interpret the ordinance, but I guess if it's determined that they need, are you, is there any huge opinion either way, whether or not the variance, you know, needs to happen? Or whether you're going to be okay if it comes out that, hey, no variance is required for this?
If no variance is required?
Yeah.
Then no variance is required.
So you're fine with whatever the attorney is?
I don't think that would be.
I think it's just a question of whether or not we, yeah, we need it or not.
I mean, it's in there two different times.
And we'll ultimately that decision to you very quickly.
Is that, is that your question?
And that just came up today, so I do apologize for.
It's a, it's a good, it's a good thing. So in the unfortunate event that a variance is required?
Yeah.
Would you think that the current agenda item on the 28th would be postponed to what? March?
No, no, I have plenty of time.
They should postpone it that night, shouldn't they?
Yeah, the agenda's already been posted that you're on there for the variance, so no, it wouldn't need to be postponed. That's a regularly scheduled meeting, we have plenty of time to determine either way.
So you're good with us proceeding with the zoning board prior to?
Yes, yes. And we had an opinion from the attorney that you could do that. Yes. It's a very unique situation. Most of the things that go to the Board of Appeals are for setback. And so this doesn't happen very often, that it's a planning board application, so I already checked with the attorney, and she said to proceed in this order. Good question.
I think we've gone as far as we can with this then for tonight.
I think I would make an official motion to table though.
Table.
So moved.
We have a motion.
I can't make the motion.
Yeah.
Motion to table this.
We have a motion from Jim to table, to table the, I want to say it right. To table the request from Tarpon Towers to LLC and Verizon Wireless for the site plan review to construct 124-foot wireless telecommunication facility and associated improvements on land owned by Scott and Kendra Kimball located 26 Wilderness Way, map lot R07-045 in the Rural Zoning District. So the motion is made by Jim to table that. Second, Marty?
Second.
Second by Marty, all in favor? Thank you. It's being tabled until we have a public hearing?
On February 4th.
Yes.
February 4th, correct. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
We will move on to planning board business, number five. The signatures, and they're all over here on the table.
They're all over there. Those are just final plans that you guys already reviewed. We're just looking for those of you that were here for that meeting to sign those plans. And there's a list of who was here for each set. Some of you may have already done it at the last meeting, but some of you are not here. And we're going to catch you on the way out, all of you.
I'm just going to read, I'm just going to read what it says, so it's in the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, so it's for planning board folks, so it says signature final plans for missing signatures for planning board members. One is for Windsong Development Site Plan, previously approved by the planning board on May 16, 2023 for two 3,500 square foot buildings and associated operations, operations yard for tax map U05 lot 24-1. And the second one is for CN Brown Site Plan, approved by the planning board on October 15, 2024 for a new convenience store and fueling station located at 99 Roosevelt Trail, tax map U06 lot 7 and 8. And so those are the things that we need to sign if you're here to sign those. Move on to item six is public participation for any planning board business. Steve, Karen, anything? And we'll move on to seven is other business. And it says, A is a planning board meeting scheduled for January 21st?
Yes, we have an application for that one.
Okay. Get that, we didn't get that out yet, right? It's coming?
It's coming.
Okay.
Yep.
And for February 4th workshop?
That's a question mark, but what now, we have application. We have something on the agenda, so it's up to you guys if you want to try to do it on the same night. As of right now, that's the only item we have is the cell phone tower.
The public hearing.
I think we should try for it.
We'll try for it. Alternatively, plan for it, and if, if we end up with two or three more applications, we'll just postpone it to another meeting.
Yep, and if we're in and out, then, then we can have a little workshop, that'll be good. B is reminder of the Board of Appeals meeting for January 28th at 6:00 PM, 2020, it's 2024, but it's 25. At 6:00 PM, so that's just a reminder for that. And is there any other business for the board tonight?
I had something I wanted to talk about.
What do you have?
Like five minutes, maybe?
Okay.
So I've been thinking about this, and I wanted to get your input and thoughts on it. So in my conversations with some other folks on other planning boards in, in other towns nearby, it, it's come to my attention that shoreline zoning projects, residential ones that involve changes of foundation and expansion, additions, things like that, are under the purview of the planning board in those communities. And I was thinking about why that is and talking with them about it. And the conclusion I came to is the reason that we have shoreline zoning is because it's to protect a public resource, our lakes, our rivers, our streams. And that it makes sense in my mind that because you're protecting a public resource, that, that changes like that, like adding things and, to non-conforming structures and moving foundations and adding on to things, there's a benefit to conducting that kind of business in a public forum. So right now, the jurisdiction is all in the code enforcement office, right? So if you have a house within the shoreline zone and you want to add your 30% or whatever you want to do, or maybe squeeze in a garage or whatever, that's, that's all just code enforcement office. I don't mean just, that's where it is. And I'm thinking that, that like Denmark, like Raymond, like Casco, not Casco, Waterford, that we might do those kinds of projects in, in the pub, public realm and have them come to the planning board. It wouldn't really make any much difference at all for the applicant. I mean, they still need to provide all the same information, and it would just, they'd be coming to us rather than going to the code enforcement office.
They still have to go to code office.
To get their permit, yeah. It would be just like anything, I mean, so if we, if there was a business in the shoreline zone, I mean, that comes to the planning board.
But all commercial does, no matter what.
All commercial, right, right, right. But I'm saying resident, right now, any residential, these types of projects, and you could have a, a sidewalk, the public could be involved. And part of this came from my conversations with these people that I've come to know on these other planning boards. And part of it came from a few things that have been brought to my attention, that people would say to me, what the heck is going on over there and blah, 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 and that kind of thing? And I'm like, I don't know, that's not planning board stuff. And then it just made me think about this and that, is there a benefit to doing this kind of stuff in a more public forum?
My turn?
Sure. Oops, sorry. Everything's on wheels around here.
The, I, the way I look at this is with the residential, you have a planner, you have an assistant, you have two code enforcement offices in that office. And trust me, I get bombarded with questions all the time as to why things can't be done and why they can be. I think they've got a great handle on it, and I don't believe that we need to be subjecting residential owner to come to us, or subjecting ourselves to having to listen to every one of these things that are done. You know, I know probably which ones they're questioning. The big green one over here was mentioned at a meeting, and that's on the same footprint. And the 30% added was the garage, the house that burned down years ago, a couple of years ago.
I don't want to make it about a particular project.
And there's one down on Brandy Pond, and I see it, and I know exactly what they did there, and it was legal.
So do you think that?
I don't think, I don't think we need to micromanage it at this point.
No, it's, I don't think it's micromanage, I think it's just, what it really is, is changing jurisdiction, that's what it is. It's not.
And I believe that they're qualified to deal with this.
I'm not saying that they're not, that's not what it's about at all.
And I, and I don't, and I didn't take it that way.
So I have, I have some thoughts. I think before you can think about that, I think you would, should look at the land uses in the shoreline zone and see who's the, you know, who's the jurisdiction, as you called it. It looks like for principal structures and uses, one and two family, that oddly enough, stream protection requires, it says planning board in that box. I, I'm going to read it tomorrow. But the other three shoreline zoning, RP, LR, limited residential, LC, and commercial do not require CEO. So I'll look at it tomorrow, but I think you should look at it too and see what's there. The hard part about having the planning board administer it is the way that its calculate changes every once in a while, whether it's volume or, and if the town adopts new ordinances, it's a lot to, for a planning board to keep up with. Technically, the planners really don't really get involved in that. I took the class, I was certified in shoreline zoning, I didn't keep up with it, I'm no longer certified in that because I had code officers to do that, right? The bar is pretty high, the submittals are really high. They are required to bring in a survey, they need to show where the high water mark is, they got to bring in a septic plan. We've got one right now that, you know, we've been juggling with for many months because they've got a high bar in order to get that permit. That's just my thoughts, but it's certainly something that could be brought up at the ORC meeting too, to take a look at this table in shoreline and see if it's, needs to be adjusted. But the bar is really high when you're doing any kind of changes in the shoreline zoning district.
Somebody that when I came in a couple of years ago to change everything over there, everything I brought into the planning board, I would have had, if that was a residence, I would have taken all of that stuff to code enforcement.
Right, right, right.
And the Port of the District also reviews the septic design, correct?
Right.
They talked to them, and they also talked with Jeff Kellman, who's part of.
MDEP.
MDEP, you know, if, if we have any questions, we reach out to them as well.
So is there a way for the public to know more about that though? I mean, maybe a change would be is that abutters get notified when somebody in the shoreline zone is planning?
You know how many, that'd be a lot of people.
I think if we could make it so that it was maybe immediate, abutters are smaller sphere, 500 feet would be a lot.
Well, just for each shoreline property.
Again, going back to my original premise, the reason that the law exists in the first place is because it's a public resource, and yet these decisions are made not in the public. So that, that's the genesis of the conversation, I think, that.
They start doing them without reaching out, and they'll do it.
I mean, there is, I mean, so the only two things that we do, other than the commercial, and if there were multi-family, there would be, we do the docks if they're over 300 square feet and longer than 50 feet, that's what we do, but.
There's quite a few things that you do have review for. If you look at this one sheet that is the land use table.
Really, like what other than?
Shoreline zoning land uses.
We never get anything.
Well, that's because people are doing.
I'm the lucky one.
The only thing you've ever done is an arena business.
Structures accessory to allowed uses in two of the shoreline zoning districts, commercial in two of them, multi-unit residential in three of the shoreline zoning districts, other essential services.
Right, I think you'll find that all of that is either commercial or multi-family, which yes.
Home occupations in one of them, road construction, campgrounds in three of them. So there, there are quite a few, but the, the single-family home is what you're primarily talking about, the 30% expansion, I think, is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be a great topic for the ORC to kick around.
Well, I mean, I guess I brought it here first.
Right, so here what their thoughts are.
The, the way to go, it could either be this board or the ORC can make the formal request to the select board to ask the ORC to make the change. So that's, because the ORC can't make the change really unless the select board says, yeah, go ahead and make the change. So somebody has to officially ask. But I, at least, we started the conversation, I, we could, I'd certainly love to have the conversation with the ORC as well. But again, my whole constant, my whole point was that it came from a place of, we're trying to protect a public resource, and yet these decisions are made not in the public.
It's like the idea that you had about a button notification?
Yeah.
And it could even be that the applicant is required to do that, to send the letter and give us a certify, the copy of the letter and the certification, which doesn't add another step to staff, or the.
Cause that would definitely be a step in the right direction, because I think a lot of the times, something like this happens in the shoreline zone, and, you know, all of a sudden bulldozers, bulldozers are appearing, and things are being torn down, and people are like, what the heck is going on?
Right.
You know, and I'm getting picked on because I cut a twig down, you know? So people are wondering where the, the balance is.
The other thing I like about your idea, that idea, is that I, we always tell people that, talk to your neighbors before you do any project, whether it requires public, public planning board, you know, approval anyway, so that you have, so that they're aware of it, so it's not a surprise.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, but something we can talk about.
This is a scale, how many of these are done a year?
Oh gosh, we could find out. We're doing it in a report right now, so we could find out pretty easily.
This is a scale, that'd be easy.
That was my question, when, when Jim said like overloading the planning board with things that we're, I'm making a change to my house here, and you're on this side of me, you're on that side of me, and, and it's a, it's a change that's going to probably be allowed. If I just notified you two guys on either side of me, that might ease a little bit of worry out there. And that's why I wrote down how many of these happened, and then I said, would that be something like for, just adding on to a deck or changing decks or just we're talking foundation work?
Well, my thought, based on what they do in Denmark, it would be any increase in expansion of square footage and/or impervious surface, that's, or, or moving a foundation, you know, like when somebody picks up a, a camp or something, and they build their foundation and they move the camp or something like that. Those kinds of, not if you're doing a bath or a kitchen remodel, or, you know, nothing like that.
Exterior.
Changing the footprint, changing the footprint or increasing the impervious surface, adding a garage or a shed, because that does do that.
We have a lot of people that come there for sheds, in, for shoreline and elsewhere, you know?
Yeah.
Constantly.
It's a good thing they're coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of them go to the Board of Appeals too, because of the fact that they need to be able to have setbacks, you know?
And but in that case, the, the abutters get notified.
Right.
Right, yeah. And in the shoreline zone, you can't move closer to the water with an appeal, you could do closer to the sidelines, but not the water. Anyway.
I think, I think a move towards, at, at least a button notification would be, even if it's not the town wants to do, like it's a certified letter that they, that the homeowner would provide.
They supply.
Does it do that anyway?
They don't do that now.
Yeah, they don't.
But so they have to provide evidence as part of their application project that they that they notified their abutters, that would be helpful, I think.
This will be a step, it would be a step in the right direction. Yeah, how many of those, how many of those would be interesting, to know how many of those happen a year?
Good topic.
Thank you. But everything like that comes, is supposed to come before the code enforcement anyway, right?
Correct.
Any, any, okay.
Yeah, because they have to grant the building permit, but so, and I know they do, and they do a great job, but I'm just, again, I just, again, going back to just the publicness of it all, that's all. Thank you.
Like you said, people come and ask me these questions, and you're like, I don't know what's going on over there, and we don't necessarily be the ones that know. Okay, anything else, new business, thank you Martina for bringing that up. No, no, motion two?
Motion adjourned.
One? Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody, thank you Karen.